Board meeting, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shading, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hafner? Mr. Hohenstein?
Here.
Mrs. Hugh?
Here.
Mr. Rightnowon?
Here.
Mr. Heats?
Here.
Mr. Stupids?
Here.
Mrs. Qualizer?
Here.
Mr. Waggonan?
Mr. Waggonan is away on business, so he will be not able to join us this evening.
Mrs. Adenber?
Here.
Eight present.
So the first thing on our agenda this evening is a recognition of an obituary minute of a staff member that worked with the school district several years ago. So I will read the obituary minute. This is for Mrs. Susan Kutz. Whereas the Board of Directors of the Brandywine Heights Area School District acknowledges the passing of a dear friend in education, Mrs. Susan M. Kutz, on December 4th, 2022. Whereas Susan Kutz served the school district with dedication and excellence as a high school secretary prior to her retirement in 1996. And whereas Susan Kutz's commitment to lifelong learning, devotion to students, and record of excellence in education and community endeavors will long be remembered and appreciated. And whereas her mat- her passing is marked by a deep sense of loss to her family and friends in the district. And whereas the Brandywine Heights Area School District would like to publicly recognize the extraordinary life and record of service of Mrs. Susan Kutz. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board directors, the Brandywine Heights Area School District should officially honor Mrs. Susan Kutz for her role in improving the lives of countless students and citizens through her contributions to education, public service, her family, and the community. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of the school district this ninth day of January 2023 with the copy sent to her brief family. If we can just have a moment of silence for Mrs. Kutz. Thank you, everyone. So next up, we have a very special recognition. Uh, Mr. Gordon, if you don't mind joining me up front here. A great just way to say thank you in the most fun, lighthearted way with our students. And there are some thank you cards there from our elementary students. So hopefully, uh, you'll have a chance to cruise those through the evening or when you get a chance to at night this evening. Again, thank you for all you do as elected service members for our school community. Finally, before we get started with our official minute, we had official agenda, we have two other things. We have our student board representative reports. Uh, so Mrs. Eisenhardt, do you want me to do that? Do you wanna?
I got it. It's highlighted here.
You do.
Tatiana and Megan are here tonight. You guys wanna draw straws? Who's going first?
In the elementary school, kindergarten registration will open this week. Any child that will be turning five years old on or before September 1st is eligible to enroll for kindergarten next year. All information is posted on the elementary school's website. On January 13th, their PTC will be hosting a dance-a-thon in the afternoon in the ES gym. You are invited to join from 12 to 3. Volunteers will need to have clearances on file. On January 27th, the elementary school students will celebrate the 100th day of school. They will have a fun-filled day counting to 100 in many different ways and doing a lot of math activities. In the intermediate school, students have been collecting hats, scarves, and gloves that will be donated to local shelters. They will also be having a dance-a-thon on Friday, January 13th. Students have also been making cards for Mr. Gordon, whose last day is this Thursday. Both schools will be having a spirit week the week of January 23rd. Monday is a white-out, Tuesday is plaid day, Wednesday is dress up as your favorite celebrity day, Thursday is decades day, and Friday is western day. The second marking period ends on this Thursday, January 12th. And eighth grade students will begin scheduling their ninth grade courses on February 9th.
January is not necessarily very eventful at the high school. Everyone's kind of sad that Christmas is over. But we will be wrapping up the second marking period this Thursday, January 12th. And the second semester will begin on Friday, the 13th, where some students will be starting new classes. Our Future Business Leaders of America, the FBLA, held their regional competition at Kutztown University right before the winter break. Twenty-five students competed and twenty-third of our members placed, with 21 going on to the state competition in Hershey. Jaeger Smeltz, Lucas Boyt, Jacob Deicher, London Cerulo, Julian Prince, Logan Schoen, Jenna Christ, Joseph Christ, and Kayla Wilson all placed first in their event. Jackson Kraft, Christina Schuster, Colin Seidel, Clarice Clyde, Brayden Ann Brewster, and Shamus Coffin all placed second. Logan Herring, Grace Potiger, Georgia Ray, Hannah Ray, Josh Sternar, Annie Berger all placed third. Avery Potiger placed fourth, and Kylie Swaveley placed fifth. The underclassmen are currently picking their classes for next school year with their guidance counselors. The BH Clothing Circle will be laying out free clothing in the high school's cafeteria on January 28th from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. There are baby sizes to 3X in shirts, jackets, pants, dresses, skirts, shoes, and accessories. In athletics, the teacher appreciation game held by girls' basketball will be at home against Fleetwood on the 17th. And the girls' basketball cancer awareness game will be held at home against Kutztown on the 23rd. Tomorrow night's game at home against Kutztown will be a fundraiser dedicated to raising money for the Harrison family whose home caught on fire on Christmas Day, and boys' basketball is ready to support. The boys' wrestling team will compete in the Berks County Individual Playoff Tournament this weekend on the 13th. And the Berks County Team tournaments will be held on the 27th. The girls' wrestling team will wrestle at the Coal Cracker Tournament on the 21st. And this afternoon, Unified Bocce Team lost both of their sets to Daniel Boom.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, thank you so much for presenting that. And if you do have a chance and can join for the Harrison fundraiser, there's a lot of events that Megan just talked about. But that is one that we can come together as a community and support a family that tragically lost their house on Christmas Day in a fire. So, uh, Megan, what was the date of that again?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night. Thank you. That being said, we're going to transition. Uh, we do have a small presentation this evening. We've partnered with Keystone Sports Construction as we look at and evaluate sports fields as well as stadiums. So we're going to transition and talk about this presentation. I'm going to do the first two slides here, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Jeff Sellers.
Get us and get us back in sync of where we were. So we started with conversations about improving our stadium and our fields with a student survey. We looked at, uh, first looking at our high school, uh, when we evaluated our ESCO project, uh, which was in 2122 uh, in conjunction with a bunch of other facility enhancements. We looked at enhancing and building a new stadium over at the high school. Uh, that cost came in about $5.4 million. So that quickly, uh, shut down the idea of putting a stadium over the high school. And primarily that was because, uh, we were looking to create some building access routes uh, and make the facility a little bit more fluid in terms of the movement of students and fans. So we shifted, uh, this fall, the building construction committee and the administration met with a host of different companies. And that's when we decided to make that strategic partnership with Keystone Sports Construction. Uh, they've been a great partner in, uh, looking at all the different avenues of the project. Uh, and at that time, we had talked about putting the project over here, uh, and enhancing our current facility here with the track and the field. That was about $1.82 million estimated. Uh, November, December, uh, we had, uh, we installed new LED lights at the stadium. Uh, if you haven't had a chance to drive through town, uh, they're on, they're on a timer system now. So they go on in the evening at dusk, right at dusk automatically, and then they shut off at eight o'clock. Uh, it's been great. If you have a chance to see, there are community members walking track at almost every night. There's kids when it was warmer last month, last week, playing, uh, football and soccer in the stadium at six, seven o'clock at night, which we never wouldn't be able to do before. So huge investment by this board and already paying dividends for the community. And in December, in conjunction with the middle school project, uh, as we looked at doing the upgrades here, we met with the DEP because Toad Creek is a high-quality stream, uh, and that causes some, a bunch of different red flags and DEP involvement. So that's really the updates we want to provide tonight, uh, and that Jeff's going to talk about next. Just shifting gears real quick, uh, from a funding source aspect, uh, just to make sure we're talking the same thing. We are not looking to do any tax increases to pay for this. When we originally did and took loans out to improve our pro- improve our facilities, which included the elementary school. When we did the upgrades here, this building, the intermediate middle school, we also put some dollars aside, knowing we had to do something with our stadiums. Uh, so there still is about $1.3 million sitting aside from that initial loan. Uh, we've also had some strategic, uh, conversations with partners of the school district to get some additional funding coming in. Uh, and then there's some additional upgrade dollars that are set aside, additional $500,000 that are set aside to do, uh, some other enhancements of the, uh, of the facility. So there is money sitting there, um, and I want to make sure that we're clear that there, this is not looking to raise taxes to pay for this, that we're looking to use either fund balance or the dollars that are set aside from loans already taken out for this project. So with that being said, uh, any questions on the timeline, just to calibrate us for dollars? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sellers to talk more about the outcomes of what we have at the DEP and some next steps.
I'm going to flip ahead here real quick on things. So thank you very much. It's great to see everybody again. Happy New Year to all. Congratulations to all you that were honored to see me. It's very exciting. Um, so what I wanted to show you here real quick is we've spent countless hours now working with the administrative team, um, Ms. Potiger, Nicole, um, to really kind of figure out how do we bring a best-in-class facility to the school district. Um, and as you know, we've obviously had a lot of dialogue about doing something out front here, um, for a variety of reasons. And as you referenced with the lights there now, obviously a lot of community activity happening around that track. So Toad Creek runs along the far side of basically the driveways you come in off the main road there and circles around. But what it does is it obviously goes off, if you look thinking about a clock, off towards one, two o'clock. So really where it flows really sort of impacts the entirety of the area that is out front. So when you're going through and you're looking to do new infrastructure within the perimeter or the confines of this particular area of impact, um, that's where we have to engage both the local, uh, county conservation district as well as DEP at the state level to really let them know, here's what we're thinking about doing, here's what the scope of work is potentially going to look like. Um, and we really need to get their impact as it relates to what types of requirements they may place upon the project that we would have to adhere to through the civil engineering process, stormwater management capacity, things of that nature. So all of this is done, you know, there's been no expense to the district. This has really been us taking that ownership on as a company and a partner of the district to really investigate every nuance associated with the space to make sure that when we have the opportunity to move this forward, the project forward, we, all the knowns are known, and we don't want any surprises. So what we've seen here is because of where this is, and I just flipped back a slide here, you'll note that, let me pop off that, here we go. So just going back one circle, I had a, let me just, sorry for all this. Nevermind. So we had a rendering initially up here that kind of gives you an idea of what this, um, would look like. And obviously from an aesthetic point of view, all of those things get fine-tuned towards the end. But as we move forward and had our engagements with the county conservation district and with DEP, because of where Toad Creek runs across the perimeter of that, that blue demarcation line, basically from a, for repairing rights perspective, you have, because that is a high-quality watershed area, you have to be 150 feet setback from where that is. Now, as evidenced, you know, in this prior slide, let me look here. So you'll see a lot of pictures and so forth. The school district to this point, previous, has already spent, uh, a lot of investment in the, in Toad Creek as far as putting in tall grasses and various types of trees and so forth to really preserve what that is and what it will be in the go-forward capacities, which is fantastic. But when you're doing a project like this, sorry for all the flipping, basically get into a scenario where they still have additional requirements. So you have existing infrastructure out front. Obviously, that includes the lighting that has been there with the LED retrofits that are on it, as well as you have the stadium infrastructure that is there. So we've been always trying to work within the confines of that to deliver the projects within that, that, that area. Unfortunately, because of what DEP requirements are and having to have 150-foot setback, basically where that blue demarcation line is, is where the far left of the track would actually have to start in order to not be impacting that particular area without massive investment in terms of being able to, uh, basically repair that area and/or add additional infrastructure to make sure that high-quality watershed, uh, remains intact. So unfortunately, that would force us to slide that over. So then we took some time to figure out, well, what if, you know, just taking the existing infrastructure off the table for the moment, how can we be creative and perhaps still use this area? But because of the way Toad Creek wraps around, as I showed you, kind of going towards one and two o'clock, as you start to triangulate this field to see if we could do some things there, we're still hampered by this 150-foot setback. Uh, so it creates a lot of challenges, and then it starts to impact investment that the school district has already made. So what we've quickly found in, through exhaustive efforts and multiple meetings with them, is that doing what we desire to do here and what the school district desired here is not the best course of action, both in terms of viability as well as financially being able to do it. That said, what we are working on right now is a sidebar project. Clearly, that track is of a lot of importance to the community at large, as evidence to what you stated before. We are working through very cost-effective solutions to be able to upgrade that track slightly. Um, so it makes it more, you know, user-friendly, you're not tracking mud around and sowing cinders and weeds and all those other kinds of things. And because we have the ability to do something like that, because we're going on top of what is there, we are not digging and moving a ton of earth in order to put in the infrastructure required for what the ultimate goal was. So that is something where we will be having a conversation here probably over the next week or two to talk about what that looks like and how to do it. But, um, with Ms. Pyro's direction, you know, very cost-sensitive and friendly is solution there. But it's going to be something that is going to achieve the objective for this area while enabling us to really kind of shift focus over to the, the high school, which is where we're going to be moving. Um, I know you have a lot of I know you have a lot of notes on here. Is there anything that you want to touch upon that I maybe? Okay, great. So just sliding over here. So really what we're doing here, this is sort of the process of what we had. What we've now done is taken our resources both internally within Keystone as well as, you know, from an engineering perspective. And shift the gears over to the high school. So regardless of what was done in previous years to say, this is what the dollars and cents are to put in infrastructure over there. We have a very different opinion and we believe that we can still deliver a world class or state of the art, excuse me, track and turf field that will accommodate the athletics. Give the school district a best in class facility for youth athletics, the schools athletics and the community at large while working with within a reasonable budget. Was some of the benefits of over there while that area is still a high quality watershed as well, we are working with the conservation district as well as D E P. It is not as restrictive over there because you're obviously all familiar with the landscape. It's rather open. There's not a lot of encumbrances. There's no Toad Creek floating around back there. But also a benefit behind the baseball field is a very large basin that has already been there, which was built really to support. The storm water for the school itself. And because of the size of that, we're deep into the investigation phase where we may be able to leverage. That in whole or in part, which is a massive cost savings potential to the project in in whole. So. We are deep in the process right now investigating all of those scenarios whereby. Within the very near term, we're just redoing a whole different set of civil engineering and storm water management plans. We will then have a follow up meeting with the conservation district and D E P based upon some feedback and guidance they've already given us to say, here's what we're going to do. Here's how we're going to do it. We've already addressed some of your boxes. And when you go through that particular process, you know, really the D E P, as I mentioned before. You have to allot for about six months to really get through their approval approval process. There's an administrative review. There's a technical review. Most conservation districts are are friendly to the idea of doing a pre administration review where we can sit down. And really get into the weeds with them, get their initial feedback, initial assessment. We can take that feedback and incorporate that in our plans before we officially submit. Which helps, you know, fast track the entirety of the project. When you sit into a high quality watershed though, from time to time, that can trigger an independent review. So there could be a third step there, which can sometimes elongate that permitting process. So we are aggressively working through all of those angles right now. And while we're doing all of that, we know based upon what the scope of work is that we desire there feel. Obviously, track and other items that are there, we are building out the cost structure for that. To be within the tolerance range that we've been discussing to this point as reasonably as possible whereby we can deliver that back there. So we're sort of parallel pathing things, but our objective is by February's board meeting to have that. Basically, we had to scrap everything that we did, start over and come back. So we are past the drawing board stage over here and and running hard against that where. We speak probably weekly, you know, just here's updates and feedback to the administrative group knows exactly where we are. But I expect that, you know, this time next month, we'll be able to sit here with tangible costs of what this is going to be, the real timelines based upon what D E P has described. And then some of the other considerations that were large cost drivers when you went through this exercise in previous years, you know, the roundabout and some of the things that are there. There's some creative ways to achieve the objective without that level of investment. And we're thinking through. Three or four different options right now that can solve for that while being cost friendly, you know, to the overall project. The bottom line is that that facility back there, the infrastructure, the landscape that is there is is fantastic. And there's a lot of opportunity there to really even upgrade it further. Plenty of parking. It's just really making sure that the transition from the parking back to that facility is optimal, right? Both in terms of pedestrians as well as dropping off student athletes and so forth. So. We're extremely optimistic that you we will be able to deliver the project for you folks and we are working within a budget, you know, construct right now. And to the extent that it's shifting one way or the other, we're extremely transparent on what's going on there. So that way there are no surprises. But we'll know a lot more here and we know a lot more every single day as we have these engagements. So unfortunately, it's just a long and frustrating process, but. It's the state guidelines and rules and regs that we have to adhere to to make sure that when this is done, it's done properly without without issue. So. I'll take a breath there, but that's where we've been, where we are. And again, I'd like to reiterate, this is hundreds and hundreds of man hours that we've invested in the partnership. And there's been no cost to the district to this point. This is really making sure that we're bringing you forward something that you want and we've crossed every, you know, dotted all the. Ts cross the Is, whatever the sayings may be, to make sure that we're bringing forward a sound. Project for you with as much fiscal conservancy as possible and oversight. So happy to address any questions, but you know, we wanted to meet it or they wanted me to come here tonight just to really update you because it's been a few months since we've had the opportunity to connect. But again, I think in short order, we're going to be able to have some tangible dialogue moving forward and then next steps are really going to start to kick in and move things along. And I did on this, I'm sure you'll share this out. I've updated some of the project timelines and things of that nature. And these are still worst case scenarios that we've laid out there just so everybody's aware. But really where we get handcuffed is working with the conservation district and D E P. We can only move as fast as they move. But luckily, to this point, they've been very engaging and willing to to have some dialogue that other places across the state aren't perhaps as willing to do so. So. All positive things. It's just a process. So please bear with us.
I think you sort of lost me. I don't know if it was probably enough, but I want you to go back to what is being planned, if anything, that was the middle school with the track you talked about. Is that just an upgrade in the existing sooner type track?
Sure. So what we have the ability to do is because basically what we want to do is put down a surface over the existing cinders that are there. So this is probably going to be a combination of asphalt with like a tennis court type of surface over the top of it. So it'd be extremely smooth. And walker friendly. We're looking at that as as a primary option. So this is the most cost effective option to achieve that. That goal would be sort of option one. And because we are not moving any earth, we are actually working within an existing footprint. We don't have to necessarily, you know, abide by what we were doing, what D E P would require if we're actually moving earth. So the objective is, you know, we had had discussions about putting a track down right on that surface. And there are some issues related to D E P that. Sort of creates some challenges there. But when you're working within asphalt and within tennis court or resurfacing products. The rules are a little bit different and affords us the ability to upgrade that very cost sensitive, achieve the goal while looking at the the larger project that we can.
So other than that, is there anything else that you are looking at?
No.
So in other words, it's just an upgrade of the track in the existing location?
Yes, sir.
With the D E P.
Correct, correct, yeah.
And is there is there a full rate cost now?
We are actually, I've sat down with my guys today within probably about seven, ten days, I will have that actual number. So these are two separate projects in my role. And we are, the holidays slowed us a little bit with people being off and so forth, but I was told today that we'll have a number for that specific piece soon. And we're parallel pathing these internally on our.
Okay, so this is what I'm talking about. If you were to go forward and improve the track in the location. So there's a cost associated with that. We also have a cost associated with the the platform that we're talking about. Do we have any numbers worth testing? So that. Yeah. Do we have any 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 initiating of the preliminary times or anything like that? If a mountain.
Yeah, we we haven't really too much.
Okay, so so the middle school understands the cost of the renewable and attract. And eventually the stadium. Okay, so that'll be one fixed cost. Fixed cost. And we major what we want to do is going to clean it and turf field. Moves to the high school. And you're you will be giving us all those figures off.
We're deep in the brain and forward as fast as we can.
All right, thank you. So we're talking about two different areas now, not just one.
Yeah, so within my organization, they've broken it down to two separate projects. So I have got a group of engineers doing one thing and a separate group doing another. The other one at the high school is obviously more complex. This is actually. Rather easy. It's more of a pricing exercise than anything. And again, we're looking to do, the goal here is to make this. More user friendly to the community because it really is just a walking track. It's not really a competition track or anything. Is to upgrade it and make that a more friendly experience, right? So we're looking at, you know, what's done. And one thought was, hey, what if we just asphalt that? But then when you do something like that. There's some regulations where that's not permissible, but if you put tennis surfacing on it as an example. Then that's fine. So there's all little kinds of rules and regs that we're working around to achieve the objective in the most cost effective way possible.
I should assume then that the whatever the surface is going to be for that track there, it would not impede any reason. A lot of runoff people into Toad Creek.
No, no, it'd be the existing infrastructure the way it is and actually the grading of it, a normal track, normal scenarios with this would be. You typically from outside in have a half degree of slope. So many water that would hit that would actually channel. Correct, right. So no impact to Toad Creek. We're staying away from that.
Are you going to be moving over to the high school with?
Though I was really just an update right now. Basically, what you can think of visually is we've shared in the past renderings, I think I had on there, I'm not sure. At the end of the day, the concept is the same. The rendering is the same. It's soccer. It's sports that we discussed with the track going around that. And then as we get that dialed in. Peripheral conversational we had around any other types of small amenities that you may desire from ball stop systems to. Small fencing or whatever the case may be, but those are nuanced and small costs relative to what we're trying to achieve. And those are sort of the the ninth, tenth, eleventh hour where we wrangle those things in and based upon desire.
Okay, one of the biggest things that we tried to accomplish originally at the high school was to get an access. I guess the east side of the school building now.
The bus roundabout.
Pulling a bus around on the back. Is that still an option that you're looking at or?
We are looking at it. That is a monster cost driver.
Right, so we identified that as one of the branding things for for going over.
Correct.
But if we still need some kind of access, are you looking to expand the existing parking areas then and somehow wrapping it around the ball field or something?
We'd be looking at the other side of the building, which I understand there's some challenges there because of like that big. A gold oil tank that sits there and some trash and so forth. There's a variety of options that we're exploring right now. Short answer, I can't give you a definitive, we're going path A or path B. That path, you know, starting on the east side where the current bus roundabout is and building an access and a roundabout back there. Is wildly expensive, number one. And really, what is the cost benefit associated with that other than? Hey, I can bring in and drop off the athletes from the other school a little bit easier, right? You're not solving the parking considerations there. So it's not that it can't be done, it can. It's just, it's.
You're talking about what we're thinking.
No, and the other. The original thing. So that's a very expensive endeavor. It just comes down to what's the the cost benefit associated with that. We're going to spend that money and what are we solving for? Having a bus come in there to be able to just drop off some students, have them easy access to the gym as well as the fields. Well, that's an expensive proposition if that's your only. That's the only use case you're solving for. Whereas there may be other ways to achieve that similar objective, which is access to the gym where parents aren't blind, them going around that corner. But do it in a in a more friendly manner. So we're exploring a multitude of ways to achieve that objective. But we have to be budget conscious to, you know, where we currently are working with and how we allocate those dollars to the project specifically. And circling back to how do we achieve that that piece of the puzzle?
I I think I recall them a perk test, but that particularly the ride.
That was not done by us. There were at at one point in time. We've looked at those to the extent, I think we had some data around that, not much. There were, that was not, we were not involved in that.
But if we were to decide to try to go that way, we would have to have that information.
Correct.
And take care of anything you're trying to do.
Yes.
Would that be your plan that you set it towards that that field that you're talking about there?
We would have, I will defer to my engineers to determine what is because it's it's easy for us to sit here and be like, okay, we can do it. We can move it this way. It really comes down to our engineers and our executive team engaging with the conservation district and D E P. They're going to dictate where it's going. It's not us saying, here's three or four ideas, which one do you want us to go with? It's them saying it has to be this way. And now we figure out how to work within their direction because otherwise they won't.
Go back to that. I thought it was someplace they were going to be looking at next month. They'd be trying to approve this for you guys to go ahead.
So our objective right now we're running against is at the the high school of being able to bring forward. A basically a contract ready number that would we've done the work, everything that I've described to this point, this is what it's going to cost. This would be for the track and for the field specifically. Now, the other items, we would have to discuss further as it relates to additional. Roadway, infrastructure, things that we're working specifically on the field and the track.
Okay, but without knowing whether or not we're going to be able to do that, I think I would be reluctant to try to. Form with any kind of approval from any. Based on not having the cost and all the items that you need. I mean, is anybody else?
So I I absolutely hear what you're saying, but I think it's believed the next step is I think it could be back to that now. There really wasn't a lot of traction with either. Right. Now, as you prepared, Jeff said there's going to be a lot of things.
Do you want to say what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
I see if they would be present presented up there right now. It is a target situation they've marked twenty twenty four and some experience from the way. This has to be all inclusive for us to really make a final decision and make sure that our budget is available. I can say, no, we're not going to raise thousands to complete any of this for us. We have the funds, but they're limited. They're not unlimited. So, you know, I myself would be very reluctant to try to include any kind of payment schedule or we're not having. Final, not to exceed cost of everything, everything. And until then, I think we maybe. Sort of jump back out with sort of a new ship. This this happened, one thing just to make that. I mean, this is just. I understand, but but we've had other presentations and I'm seeing the payment schedule there that, whoa.
That is just simply up there, just so we're clear.
Yeah.
Of how normal, how things are done normally. You know, at the end of the day, we structure these on a per deal basis. That was just more for. Broadly speaking, this is how these things go along.
When you see the the one, two, three, four things you're probably fine line working for approval or post owner agreement, send me that. That's next month. What does that include for you?
That includes the dialed in contract ready pricing for the turf and the track.
But not any other access between.
At this point, that number does not.
So then it's, I think, well, no, I think that's outside the scope of the project. Having 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 that in the field and knowing what we were trying to accomplish here, it will end up being, I think, need to be qualified.
I I want to echo what Mr. Heather's saying. I feel a little bit like. The news from the D E P and the conservation districts that created that rely, I'd say, I have no reliance on that grid. Is a major monkey wrench in our vision. We were well down the path thinking we'd get, we were close to an approval. And they put up a major roadblock which forced us to take not just one or two steps back, but a whole bunch of steps back and then do a loop around changing locations. So I'm with you, Mr. Heffler, in terms of the timeline. It feels like we're trying to stick to our old timeline a little bit, which is appreciated in so many ways. But I'm not sure, and I think this is what Ken might be saying, I'm not sure it's realistic. I think the steps back that we are being forced to take because of the. Back of the line there and change of locations creates some additional rework and. The other thing I'm feeling, particularly if we now take a different approach to the middle school charge. Again, I don't disagree in any way about what's been suggested, but I just wonder if it isn't an interesting time for some community input. And the the staff in this building and around our district that use that track for. Physed class and sports and as I said, the community who's using it, have they checked in with all of those parties to say, hey? Timeout what our game plan initially was is now stamp moved. We have a new game plan that we really want to press the on. Do we still have all of the right input before we apply a new solution? So those are two things. One is I agree with the comprehensive kind of view and that impacts the timeline. And two, I just want to make sure we're getting good community and district faculty input on. How that facility is and could be used and does that align with what what you're suggesting? Of course, what are the business requirements? And make sure that as you propose solutions, that they're aligning to those business requirements.
So this area here, so these are two separate things where we're going here, so when we look. As we pivot over potentially to the high school, right, with the track and turf from that sidebar, so what is here was the rendering in order to be able to say, okay. If we were to put a turf field inside here and within the track, um, this is, you know, what we're gonna be up against. Now, what we're all simply trying to solve for here is that is still gonna remain grass. And where those lines are and how they're chalked out or painted onto the the grass for the soccer sports and so forth are gonna be as they currently are, okay? Now that, sure, so there's a variety of surfaces that you could. Put around there to improve that, but at the end of the day, they're all gonna be perhaps not as friendly as the cinder that is there. But I guess the question I then pose is, what are we solving for? The goal, as we've understood it, was to make the track. Oh, no, a hundred percent, and and again, we're trying to. We're, we're, we're trying to bring forward solutions that achieve what we've been directed as is. Here's what we wanna do, we wanna make the track as friendly as possible to the community at large and the walkers. And currently, it's fine for what it does, but also it has its hindrances, how do we in the most cost effective manner possible? Upgrade that for the benefit of the the community and the walkers that are out there and clearly don't wanna impact athletes, we're all about safety, there's no doubt about that. Um, and again, that's just one scenario that we're looking at, that is the most cost effective way to go about doing it. Um, now, I think that, again, this is a depiction here as well, but where this would be is we would sit in the exact same footprint of where the current track is. Um, so we're looking at the options that are there, again, to bring forwards, whatever's most cost friendly to the school district, you guys approve everything. We're just working with the direction to achieve that goal, if that makes sense. Now, it's really just in the timeline, so I don't wanna create any odds around that, right? So what we've kinda outlined there is, this is how the the sequencing of events occurs, right? Now, we appreciate, we're open to everything you've described, and that's how we like to do these projects. At the end of the day, it has to be a hundred percent buy-in, everybody's gotta be happy with what the end game's gonna be. It's more to make sure that everybody understands what's going on and how these things have to occur. So I just simply updated those based upon our last meeting to say, okay, if this, we're working hard to be able to bring forward that number for next month. Sure, guys, you folks, you look at it and move forward or not, right? But at the end of the day, it's to say, okay, in order for any of these other things to happen. You know, we've got to to get to a starting point, but what happens is that permitting process is the starting point. That is six to nine months and that's what has to occur and all the civil engineering work, etc., that goes behind that. In order for the project even mobilizing and happening there, so we're trying to get to a starting point. Where the financial implications are known based upon that that the project. Now, yes, there may be ancillary things that you all want to consider, additional access roadways and so forth. Any and everything is doable, but it's also, what are the financial implications of 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 opposed, you know, to, that's we're doing one of those. So there's a couple, there's several paths that we can go, we can focus on the turf and the track, and then once, you know, we have that going. We continue to collaborate on these ancillary items and bring forward those numbers. But until we have a definitive, clear path, we one hundred percent want this, as an example of this bus, you know, that goes around there. Well, that's significant time to. Work with the conservation district and so forth, even bring forward material costs, you know, there's a lot that goes, it's not as simple as calling up. Hey, Mr. Paver, what is this cost? It's very intricate.
Yeah, I understand.
But to put a hard number against that, we can continue to walk down that path. And that just slows the rest of it down, well, versus working in harmony to achieve that.
But. What I think you're saying is, you're willing and able to now just go over there at the high school and say. We're gonna put a turf field here with a track around and all the stories, as far as the sports stadium that we're talking about and sports complex and everything. But you're not ready to tell us, you know, how do we get to?
Well, I mean, that could be something as simple as just doing. No, no, hold on, that could be as simple as just doing improvements inside the building where we're not gonna be occurring all those land moving. Excavation and paving points, maybe it's just as simple as adding in a couple of gates within the building to correct traffic as it's going through. And you can have people that are special needs or incapable, incapable walk handicapped, be able to park out front and then just navigate through the building.
Well, we did a thorough walk down, oh, those those particular, I don't even know if this is a thorough call, I'm sure he does. We did a thorough walk down that we came to the conclusion that this part and that part, you know, this might work, this may not work, but we're still never taking to a total conclusion. How much is the cost? Any of those things.
I'm willing, I'm willing to bet that two or three gates, maybe as many four gates.
No, 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 no.
A large part of, a large part of.
Walking through the building.
Yeah, but a large part of the navigation of the building was because there was, there was concerns that there was gonna be damage done inside the building.
Well, we looked, we looked at putting up gates and access to the bathrooms and everything, you know, we we looked at that and I would have been sort of minimal. As compared to the other thing that we felt we need. Right, right, but but we did look at it for access towards the boat, turned around, well, that became extremely expensive, driving call.
Moving, like, as in moving the, as we're moving the driveway to the back of the building.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm saying that, but I mean, if we just utilize the existing structure as it stands with the existing roadways and we just have people navigate through the building.
I think we're like. The track right now is useful as it is, upgrading the track doesn't change its usability, right, it just makes it more friendly to what we're using it for, so. I think putting the the track in at the high school, we can worry about the access. I mean, it is what it is right now, we're stuck. So it may not be.
Well, but that's, that's certainly a different approach, you can just say, let's, let's fix it, put the field there and. We'll let people just walk from the parking area that we talked about, this flooded systems and maybe add the access and. The visibility of the the students being dropped off, which was a major concern at the time, if you, if you're saying we don't need all of that.
No, I don't, I don't mean that, I just mean, I think that we're getting a little bit down the track, I think that we let. Mr. Sellers come back to us with a presentation that we can discuss, but we're not going to go to school right now without any copies.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, you know, I I I hate to see a February approval of a contract.
Yeah.
So that's not gonna happen, let let me kinda try to wrap this, because everyone has really good thoughts, and I think. A lot of thoughts and concern probably exactly what the initial conversation that we've had with you, which is a lot of new information, a brief DVD, you need to have all the facts. And so what it was, even though you can't read it on your notes. What I wanna do is get the construction community out of it, as I mentioned, there's gonna be a lot of, we're gonna do that in a much better way. The goal hopefully is to be able to bring some wonders to the board, but I don't wanna force anything on anyone and feel that we're in a progression relationship. So we we will not, we will not try to make that decision instead of, let it ponder, do a presentation, do a presentation. And if we can spend some time backstabbing, then probably for the margin to get all that.
Yeah.
And that's a loose time limit, where we can place all those data points, so that when that final number comes. You're facing a decision that is, knowing all.
Yeah, I I would, I would certainly appreciate it, what you're suggesting, you know, as far as doing what the stadium and the track over there and what that would. Purpose, as far as that and cost us for that, that's fine, okay, but there's other, and and some of the things that we've discussed about and added. And you still have to come to some conclusion with that, and that's gonna have a cost, that's all I'm saying.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, realistically, I think Mr. Sellers is running on, he's been giving us all the information that we've been asking for, so I I I don't doubt he's gonna come back with it, with a fairly.
Well.
Project, but it really does fall on the construction committee to let him know what information he has to bring, to make sure that we're comfortable.
That's what I'm trying to.
Yeah.
And I would encourage that group, when they get together in partnership with you, not to be short sighted about. Um, including the field in the back of the high school and not at all considering how do people access it, so. The whole point of including the backyard of the high school is so that we can now host high school events and competitions back there. Well, it's great to host stuff back there, but spectators and refs and staff and concession and all that isn't part of that thing. And afterwards, then it it seems really short sighted, so um, I would just encourage you to keep working together. Um, but to include um, these access and usability and functionality type issues.
What I will say is I, I, car with everything that's been said here, we're, we're gonna continue to collaborate and do our best. Um, as it relates to the access, I, at school districts every single day, multiple times a day or whatever. Your main parking area is out front, uh, the school went to the side, to then get around to that. Is amazingly accessible relative to what others endure, my kids' school districts included, where they gotta walk around buildings to get there, so. I I know you, everybody gets, you you sort of, you get focused on what you have, you should appreciate the access you do have.
Then we would expect you, uh, on the, to the side of the sports, again, from infrastructure itself, to start looking at something like that also.
Mm-hmm. Let's do that, let's, we're gonna have to be able to build construction together, because I think what's important is that we almost reset a new base, even if you turn it in middle school. Say, and it sounds like, make sure that all of this costs are, let's set that to yours first, even though you're down past the best years.
Well, what we're doing needs to be done regardless, and this is just the the other piece of it, whether it's part of it or not, but what we're doing has to be done for the main piece.
That's why this. And then we can take the next steps of clause, taking things and then come to the final number.
Yep.
Use a public presentation to that, if the questions have feedback.
Exactly.
Okay. Any asphalt paving in the games contract, that's why I didn't really, the asphalt index goes up, we need that or do you have that?
So in our agreements where asphalt's involved, there is an asphalt index clause, so six months ago, it was way higher than this today. Um, thing to keep in mind is around that index, so when you're thinking about asphalt in general, it's. The index, let's just say it's a particular number, the actual impact to the cost of the project is a fraction of that. Because it's only applicable to certain components within the asphalt that really cost drive these types of projects. So it's not like, oh, it went from six to eight or whatever it is, it actually went from six to six point one as it relates to what we're doing here, so. We can take that offline, I can kinda educate on the specific pieces of. The materials that are impacted by that index, but yes, we'd be tied to that for, so it's transparent, you know, if it goes down, fantastic, we all win, but. Thank you, it's been a pleasure. Thank you for the robust dialogue as always, and I will talk to you soon, be well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, um, is there any public comment relative to the public agenda tonight? Come on up, Mr. Houston. You just state your name and your township, right?
Sure, my name's Mike Houston, I'm a resident of Long Swamp Township. And I am here on behalf of the Brandywine Girls Softball League. I am joined by Steve Geisel in the back corner and his daughter Jordan, who is a player within the softball league. So we simply wanted to make introduction to the board members, the ladies and the gentlemen. That are involved in the board for uh, the donation of the lights that is on the agenda later tonight. Some of you may or may not know that the Brandywine Girls Softball League is a nonprofit organization. Where obviously fundraising, volunteering, uh, donations all play a huge role in our. Liveness, in a sense, so we have been working towards lights to put on the girls softball league behind the top ten pool. For many, many, many years, and we're not even halfway there. So when I happened to be driving by the other night and I heard wind of the new lights on the track and I reached out to Mr. Pottinger. On New Year's Eve, I think it actually was, and he took my call. And I questioned him as to the viability of us essentially partnering with the school in. You know, purchasing or acquiring those lights, and Mr. Pottinger said that he would speak to the board members or handle it however he may. And uh, I see that it's on the agenda tonight for a donation, which is greatly appreciated, we are very thankful. For that opportunity to partner with the school district to ultimately give the kids. What we've been working towards for many, many years, so I simply wanted just to say hi, some of you know me, some of you don't. Um, just wanted to say thank you for considering it as a donation, hopefully that, that. Decision is agreed upon in past uh, on our behalf, so that's, that's it, I just wanna say thank you and. You know, we're greatly appreciated for the uh, the efforts, so anybody have any questions, sir?
Just a quick question, are you geared up to like do the transport across the street there and get it installed?
Yeah, so I probably should have said, so myself, I'm a board member, Steve is a board member. Um, we have started making preparations and seeking means to get that equipment. Off the school property, uh, that was ultimately gonna be one of the questions I had was what type of timeframe. Um, are we looking at to get it off the school property and stored at our own facility or on our own property, whatever that may be? Uh, but yeah, we have started to look into the transport of the equipment, uh, removing it from the school's liability. And then, um, you know, we've actually, we've actually had a couple of companies offer um, some poles, some electrical work, so. This kinda sparked a whole wildfire of of flurry and activity, which is great for us. And some of the other local companies and local entities around the area realize that, hey, this is obtainable now for us. And they've offered up some, some volunteering and some efforts and some manpower. So to answer your question, yes, we we do have the ability to get those off the school property. I would say in the near future, depending on what, what timeframe the school would like them off, I mean, we don't wanna vandalize, so I don't wanna leave them just laying around too, too long. But uh, yeah, yeah, we're, we're, this is like a a spark to a wildfire for us, this is something that we've worked towards for many years. And it's, it's achievable, so.
We joke, while you were talking midnight tonight, should be fine.
Yeah.
When Mr. Houston uh, connected me, I I just thought it was an awesome opportunity to to give back, support another. Organization that gives directly to our community, but more, most importantly, our students, and so, um, just so everyone is aware. Those lights were going to be scrapped for recycling, so this gives new purpose and new life to them by doing this, and it is in your agenda as H one tonight. Just for your reference.
The fact.
You're protected under the political subsidy source claim act, so you have that protection already.
Okay.
Good question. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, and just one other question on a totally separate note. Um, as far as the the stadium update, I'm not gonna go into that whole thing, but how, I own. I own a land surveying firm and a land development firm in Allentown, how do I find out about? Jobs that the district has for, you know, land planning and stuff like that, where, is there a? An area on the website or is there somewhere where I can go and just keep updated on anything that's coming down the road? To potentially offer my company services?
So usually, when there's uh, bigger projects, we'll put those on the uh, business webs, on the business side of the website.
Side of the website.
Yeah, that's usually where RFPs go.
Okay.
Uh, often we'll put those announcements out to the community, either on the front page or through an email, but. The, the RFPs sit in the business office section of the website.
Okay, yeah, I'll keep an eye on that because I'd be very interested in obviously partnering and then. Subsequently donating some of my office's time back to the school district as a a thank you for everything.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we have it in the agenda under B H one, under B, the section B and H one.
I know in the past, like, when we had principals and different things and apparently it was here, we could just motion, bring it up and.
Could.
No, but I mean, realistically, it's, it's in the, yeah, it's in the business operations report, so we'd have to. Motion and second for that and then cut that out. Vote on that and then, yeah, it would just, it would be, it would be.
The reason we usually do the personals, because it's the very last thing. If we move forward.
We don't, I mean, we don't stay through the, the decision part, right?
We don't, I mean, we don't stay through the the decision part, right? Okay, yeah. Mr. Potiger knows me, Wallizer does too, I'm gonna be right down the hall coaching the girls basketball.
That's right.
Thank you.
Uh any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Board of Directors Report, could I have a motion to approve the items under the Board of Directors Report? Right now.
Uh so a couple of items under Board of Direction Director's Report, we have the meeting minutes. There were two meeting minute adjustments that were made this morning, so if you had looked at them previously, just know that there was just a couple, it was. A name change here and there that that had to be done, minor, but um just want to make sure I point that out. Any other corrections to the meeting minutes that need to be made? Uh in regards to policies, first reading policies, there's four new policies, uh really no substantial changes. Uh eight eighteen contracted services, when you open that up, you'll see some, a lot of different wording changes. Uh really all that clearance, all that changes are relative to clearances. And what uh contracted services have to do relative to clearances to work in the school district and defining direct contact with children, those sort of things. Uh eight nineteen suicide awareness, that does have some addition, some updates. Um basically, that's the new updated PSBA recommended policy. So when you open that up, you'll see a bunch of bold statements that are added in there. But again, that's the new PSBA one to be uh most uh up to date with the uh law. Uh the other two, again, not no really substantial changes there. Uh and no uh no updates or any uh feedback for the second reading policies that I received, so at that that point, uh those will stand. Alternative for committee reports, Mrs. Eishardt.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, I just have a couple of quick updates, there was no um. BCIU Board of Directors Report in December, but because I was absent from November's um Brandywine Board Meeting, I I did just want to um follow up. Um the early November was the election, of course, and the BCIU does a a really nice handout. I'm gonna share this, Mr. Potiger, with you if you haven't already gotten it. And I would just um encourage you to give a copy to each of the board members. What it does is just frame up with a photograph of each of the individuals. So the Pennsylvania State Senate has five individuals. And the Pennsylvania House of Representatives has eight individuals, and it puts a name with a face. Um and so it's just a a nice little cheat sheet um for those of you who might be interested in doing any kind of advocacy or. Um Committee of Legislative Action Type Coordination, so um helpful little handout, I'll get that to Mr. Potiger. Um I have a handwritten note on it, so you may want to get a clean version, but um. And then um just by way of updates from the BCIU in general, um organizationally, uh there's uh been a a restructure. As a result of the retirement, announced retirement of Donna DiLoretta, who is a long-term BCIU employee and who served. Or is serving as a CFO and COO, so very top of the house. Um big impact and ripple effects. Um Donna's retirement um will be effective, I think, in June or July, but her last day will be in May, and so. Months in advance, we're working um as a board and as a leadership team. Um to make sure that the puzzle pieces are um in place and that there's no adverse impact financially in particular, but also just from a leadership perspective at the IU. Um in fact, um there's already been some restructuring, Rob Rosenberry, who this um some members of this board have met. Several years ago, he came and did a presentation when we engaged the IU and some human resources uh consulting support. Um Rob has been named COO. Um Alexis Luckhart, who had worked for us, has been pr- um uh uh. Put in charge of an additional piece of HR and um. Uh Lucille Gallas, who worked for Donna DiLoretta, the CFO, has been promoted to head the financial arm of the organization. So essentially, they're taking two inside uh leaders and uh replacing one, Donna DiLoretta, and then they're backfilling. Um for some of those positions, those positions have been posted and in fact, offers have been um. Uh made and the board later this month will um vote uh uh to approve those candidates. So um just neat to see that despite the fact that we will be losing a long-term, very highly valued uh leader. That um there's good depth of bench and bench strengths to backfill those positions. Um and then the final thing, um this is just a little side note, um I received a a quick note today as a board officer. Um from Dr. Hackman, um so Josh Shapiro, the new governor uh of Pennsylvania, has named. Uh former Berks County Superintendent to be Pennsylvania's uh Secretary of Education, Dr. Khalid Moomin. Who um ran the Reading School District for, I don't know, four or five years, I think. Through a very tumultuous time financially and through restructure and all sorts of stuff. And really turned um a a corner, helped Reading School District turn a major corner. Um so very exciting for Berks County to have someone we know well. Um take on that leadership role at the state level, so more to come, I'm sure on that, but that was just um. Hot off the presses, news as as I read that email right before I came tonight. So anyway, that concludes my report, the next meeting of the Board of Directors is January nineteenth, I believe, the third Thursday of this month.
Thank you, uh BCTC met on Thursday, December fifteenth, uh we held our reorganization meeting. Uh the nominating committee unanimously recommended that Mr. Robert Heckman and Ms. Karen Freelander. Uh take over the positions or continue their positions as chairperson and vice chairperson. Uh they were unanimously uh voted into those positions. Uh relatively light meeting, otherwise, um really only thing of note is. Uh we're purchasing a used crawler loader for our heavy equipment operation course, uh we were able to use a hundred thousand dollars for Perkins funds, so we only had to have. A twenty-five thousand dollar hit to our general fund, which of course was budgeted. Our next meeting will be held at the East Campus on Wednesday, January twenty-fifth. Uh we will be looking, getting there a little bit early, so we can check out the house project, which is always a a big deal at BCTC. The students build a new house every year, year and a half, uh so it's gonna be nice to see how far along they are with that project at this point. Uh that concludes my report at this time, would you care for me to talk about the? Okay, that would be awesome. Okay. Uh there is actually nothing to report, uh the Negotiations and Conversation Committee did not have a meeting. Um however, uh with the upcoming uh budget meetings and such, uh I will be reaching out to the committee members. Uh trying to set up a time that works for everyone, so we can all get in and have a conversation, and hopefully I'll have something more to report next month. That concludes my report. You're welcome.
All right, thank you, uh so we actually met on Thursday, December fifteenth as well. Uh Becky Ionelli, who's their executive director, presented their year-to-date financials as they run on a calendar year. Uh so she presented those as well as the upcoming budget for the two thousand twenty-three school year, which is a relatively small budget. Um but they do collect the EITC earned income tax. Um they also reviewed some policy changes and also did her annual review. Um so that's all I have to report, the next meeting is March thirtieth.
Thank you for your report, Mrs. Wallizer. Anything from the Policy Committee? Uh and strategic planning and goals, uh Mr. Potiger and I will make this one uh to discuss uh.
I have uh meet your goals due uh twenty eighth day, so I'll be meeting this is I suppose the thirty-third. Uh and then then clearly at the February Board meeting, given a big concern for our stats update.
And the Building Construction Committee, sounds like we're gonna be. And any other board discussion? Mr. Houghner?
Yes.
Mr. Homchel?
Yes.
This is you? Yes. Mr. Wrightd?
Yes.
Mr. Heats?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Blomberg?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Any any questions? Thank you, um onto Business and Operations Report, can I have a motion to approve the items?
Oh, thank you, uh so this evening for the Business and Operations, we'll start off uh with the the bills reports, that's items A through D. Uh we have the general fund totaling two million, six thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-three cents. Item B, we have the food service fund bills totaling ten thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. Uh we have no construction bills for this time period. For capital reserve, we have five thousand dollars. And then item E, you're gonna see we have October and November, uh this is kind of a goal of mine when I started to kind of. Do the most recent month, um so we actually were able to complete October and November, so you see they're both on there. Um just for, you know, time relevance, um so if there's any questions on those. Um also, item E seven, those are the budget transfers as we concluded the audit for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um just kind of a comment on that, uh the audit was sent out to you guys, but Bo will actually be here next month. Uh he had planned vacation, so we told him that was okay, um so he'll be here next month to present. Uh so item F, uh Special Education Pupil Services, item number one, this is a renewal of an existing agreement. To approve Sweet Stevens, Katton Williams as Special Education Counsel for matters related to special education. For twenty-three, twenty-four, there is no change from the current pricing. Um item number two is to approve a two-year agreement. Uh January two thousand twenty-three through January two thousand twenty-five with RHA Health Services, formerly known as Salisbury Behavioral Health. Uh these, this is simply a referral, it's a renewal of an existing agreement, uh there's no cost to the district, it's simply a referral arrangement that we have with them. Uh so item G one, uh again, there's no change in costs and this is an existing agreement, a renewal for next year. It's to approve an MOU between Cushtown University and the district to allow placement of two Cushtown University graduate interns to be. Reading specialists for the district uh at a cost of not to exceed fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars per student. And then moving on to item H, facilities and maintenance. Uh as mentioned earlier, this is to approve the donation of the previously installed original. ISMS Stadium Lights to the Brandywine Girls Softball League. Um when it says originally, these were actually on our, according to our fixed asset list, these were installed in nineteen eighty. Um so obviously, you know, there's no salvage value, um and they are in fairly good working order, so that'll be a benefit to them and obviously our. The community and our students. Um so moving on to the next three items, they're they're sort of related. Um and they go back to the twenty-one, twenty-two financial report and single audit. Um we do this sort of every year, so at year end, once we did all the accruals, revenues and expenses, we came in with a one point one million dollar surplus. Um when we look at our budget, there's really three main areas that essentially the expenses didn't materialize. Uh and that would be the operations uh and transportation piece, transportation, uh we know we had less bus routes, so obviously less cost. Operations, um simply, you know, mainly custodians, um having a light winter. Um and then also staffing in regards to the paraprofessionals, so those are really three main areas. Um where I guess you could say we essentially saved some money. Um so as the years pass, we typically, that'll drop into unassigned fund balance, we typically assign that. Uh so this year, we're asking to move eight hundred thousand to the Capital Projects Fund and also a hundred and fifty thousand to. The new integrated science standards uh that PDE outlined in their curriculum, uh we'll have a presentation on that in a little bit. Um but I and J, you'll see, we actually have to move it from unassigned within the general fund to assigned in the general fund. And then we actually have to move it out of the general fund, um so it's actually a two-part process, so you'll see it's actually broken out there. And then item L is actually to next year's budget. This is to adopt the resolution of not to exceed the Act One Index for Brandywine, it's four point nine percent for next year. This is our adjusted Act One Index, uh statewide, the Act One Index is actually four point one. Um so ours is actually higher due to the market value of personal income ratio. Um and the next one, this is a recurring one, uh to approve the updated current roster of bus drivers for Brandywine Transportation. And then item N, uh at the last board meeting, we approved the resignation of the tax collector for Topton Borough. Uh this meeting, we are appointing Thomas Biltcliff as a tax collector of Topton Borough effective January one. So if there's any questions?
Thank you, any words special? I have uh just two quick questions, on the curriculum technology item, the Cushtown University interns, so there's two. Uh not to exceed fifteen thousand, five hundred, details of the agreement and it talks. And I'm thinking about an annual term. From like August through May or June, so given that we're being asked to approve this mid-cycle or mid-year. Is it reasonable for us to assume that the cost would be? Half like point in time forward or?
It's it's for next year.
Starting August twenty twenty-three.
So twenty-three point four.
God, okay, that's why I'm struggling, sorry about that. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
I just got clarified on the second page, just actually ready to hear your comment.
Okay, all right, and then um so four days a week, I gathered, for reading it uh for each student. And then is it like full-time, it's not a partial day, it's a whole day?
Right now, we have how our interns work, um we have them operated on our cycle days and then they get hired through STS to sub for us on their. Non-intern days, so they're essentially in the building every single day of the school year, it just, every other day they get paid. And I can use them as a substitute wherever they're needed, if not, then they get additional work with their students and then. Intern days, they're just treated as another reading specialist, working with our intervention team. It's a great setup.
Yeah, this is one of those like outside of the box ideas where we're actually kind of recognized within the county as having a really fantastic setup with with KU. So it's it's working very well.
They're all at the elementary.
Uh and shared at the intermediate school, so they go.
Thanks so much for clarifying.
And not good on gravity, we have similar model setup or social workers about.
And then I have one other quick um suggestion or comment, if item K were being asked to essentially fund the new. Um science curriculum for a hundred and fifty thousand without having seen the presentation. Is there any chance that before we take a vote on this, could we push the presentation forward? Would that be okay to suggest? Yeah.
Mr. Brede, you ready?
I'm ready, good.
All right, let's throw an audible. So just the nuts and bolts of this Capri, the starts to get set up, uh does data change this this data? Uh and so.
I have this meeting as well.
They have, Mr. Capri has done his new role working in science, but he's done a lot of work with BCIU, guiding with the new standards on. And when we evaluated whether those kick in, they're all cycle, they're all curricular cycle, they're all two. And so we have these options, we just left five or two years, uh or we forward plan for this. Uh and then we know science is absolutely one of our strong suits as a student, we want to make sure that our students are good with air. With the research, we can actually understand them, so that when these kick in. They're already doing the training two years, but it's now, we had to be careful. That's the thought process.
Oh, yes, and I will say before we start our science experiment, Mr. Elgarik, I'm a little disappointed to hear that things from nineteen eighty no longer have salvage value. That's very disappointing to hear, very personally. But as as Mr. Potiger shared, uh what we want to look at tonight uh are the PA STEEL standards. Uh which stands for, as you can see up on the board, Pennsylvania's Integrated Standards for Science, Technology and Engineering and Environmental Literacy and Sustainability. So that's uh the acronym STEEL stands for. So on July one, twenty twenty-five is when these standards will take uh effect. We do want to thank PDE, because this is the first time in a long time that we have had a period of time to accurately. Acclimate to a new program, so we have three years uh to to bring our science standards, our technology and engineering standards. Uh to this new uh platform, this is the first time that the science standards have been updated since two thousand and two, so there's certainly time uh for that update. One of the really interesting things, and I think again, uh a kudos to our school district, is there are also technology and engineering standards that go with this. And they're by the grade band, so there's K to two technology, three to five technology, six to eight, and then nine to. So there's K to two technology, three to five technology, six to eight, and then nine to 12. The challenge for school districts that don't invest in STEM education is that they need to find a place to put these engineering and technology standards. Does it occur in a science classroom? Does it occur in a reading classroom? We're able to put all of these standards into our STEM classrooms that every student K through eight takes and many students up at the high school take. And in our initial review of the standards, they are already incorporated. Although, you know, the, the standard language of 24.87B, however you want to phrase it, is not the, what we have in the standards. We're already hitting what those standards are in our STEM classrooms. So that won't be a major shift for us. Where the major shift will come for us is in the new concept of science education, which is this three-dimensional learning. And that's where the new science standards really touch base is this 3D learning or three-dimensional learning. And that's what we're going to kind of look at today because the three dimensions are do, think and learn. So I thought, let's, let's do a little experiment while we have it. You guys all have a sheet of paper in front of you with the very easily to understand term Typho Dramus Pyriippum. These are not Punnet squares, no sir. I'm sorry if you want to do Punnet squares. Yes. But the Typho Dramus is a mite. And then you have boxes for healthy apples with a pen or a pencil. If you want to put in the Typho Dramus box, the first one, put, put an up-facing arrow. If you don't have a pen or pencil, share with a friend. If, if the number of these small mites increase in your apple orchard, do you think your number of healthy apples would go up or go down? So put an up-facing arrow underneath it if you think they're going to go up. Down-facing arrow if you think they're going to go down. Well, then put a sideways-facing arrow. So if you, both of your arrows are facing up, you are correct. Because this type of mite is actually what is used in integrated pest management or IPM. This is a mite that goes after and kills other mites, those other mites who destroy apples. So as this predator mite is in your apple orchard, your healthy apples are going to increase. Less of these, your healthy apples are going to decrease. So we're talking cause and effect here. So what did we do? We modeled something, that's the do. You, you drew some arrows. You thought about what the connection of these two things would be and you learned a little bit about integrated pest management. Obviously, we did this in about 47 seconds. So in front of a classroom, it would be a lot more in-depth. But that's the kind of concept that we're looking at with this 3D learning. And if we go back to the previous slide, the, the two images I chose there really, I think emphasize this. This is getting science education away from the teacher in the front of the classroom doing the science experiment while the kids watch and really becomes putting the students in the driver's seat where they're the ones doing the experimentation. They're the ones theorizing, they're the ones hypothesizing and putting this all into practice. So it's put, making science education much more interactive for students and really kind of pushing that boundary from just kind of sit and get to more experiment. So, yes.
I guess.
Yes.
Is there any other information that students get so they can make an educated?
So that's one of the really interesting components with three-dimensional learning. Being that it is all, or not all, but primarily inquiry-based. In your initial activity, you're going to guess, you're going to hypothesize. It's designed for that and then you learn about it. But you also highlight what's one of the true challenges of the implementation for this. Everything builds. So you're going to not necessarily learn the same content, K2, 3, 5, 6, 8, but similar kinds of hypotheses. So changes in environment. So you're going to learn about changes of environment in K to two and three to five and, and so forth. So it's absolutely crucial for us to invest in this because if our students aren't getting that foundation in the elementary grades, by the time they hit middle school, that little exercise you did will be much more challenging, if that makes sense. So from the implementation standpoint, as I mentioned, this is a three-year implementation. And as Mr. Podiger shared, it is off-cycle with our science curriculum cycle. But what we looked at, Mr. Volker and I, is what our three years would look like and what we would do. We have already started this year primarily in six through 12, looking at modeling some of this. Teachers are participating where they're looking at, I'm going to do a lesson in a more three-dimensional approach. There are some courses through the IU that all of our science teachers are already working through. And what we're looking at right now is where we really can focus and partner with the IU and some of our curricular resources moving forward into next year. When we hit 24 and 25, that, I'm sorry, when we hit 23 and 24, that's where we're going to start rewriting our curriculum. So it's our goal by August of 2024 to have our district curriculum completely aligned to these new standards for the board to review and, and hopefully ultimately approve. And what we'll also be doing next year is spending the entire year doing professional development with all of our science teaching staff. And please don't think of science teaching staff as just our biologist, biology teachers and chem teachers. All of our elementary teachers are, or homeroom teachers are also science instructors because they are teaching science. So we definitely want to put a professional development towards them. We've already partnered with the Burks County Intermediate Unit. They'll first be out on October 9th to do a full-day professional development, which is on the Columbus Day holiday for the, the staff to get that initial professional development. And we're also going to be looking at curricular resources. One of the areas where I think curricular resource is going to be incredibly crucial is with our K to five staff. As we know, our elementary teachers have an incredibly taxed and burdened day. They're teaching six, seven, eight subjects a day. This new approach to science is a challenge and we want to make sure that they have a resource that's in hand, that is a very user-friendly, has an amount of scriptedness to it that they're not out designing their own science projects at night when they're also working on their math lessons and their reading lessons and so forth, and can fit the time constraints that they have in the elementary day. So the earlier question of where are we looking at with these funds? Moving the funds up, what we're looking to do is in 26 and 27, we would have spent this money on updated science resources. We're looking to move these funds up to 24 and 25 so we can purchase those resources now. So this, I'm sorry, 23, 24, so the staff are able to look at something that's going to work, be effective with this new style of teaching. And then lastly, in the year 24, 25, we want to have a full deployment of the resources, full deployment of the curriculum. So that has us with a year under our belts by the time the standards do ultimately change on, excuse me, July 1 of 2025. The only caveat I will add to this is since the bands are going to go to K2, 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, 12, the PSSA will move from fourth grade to fifth grade. But in that 24, 25 year, we'll be working on the new standards, but still taking PSSAs on the old standards. We don't anticipate that we would see any type of negative impact on that. Mr. Donato, our seventh grade science teacher, has fully adopted this three-dimensional learning already. He's seeing positive results with his students. Most of the standards are the same, it's the way of addressing the standards that are different. But one year, we would be, I wouldn't say fully out of alignment with the state standard, but we would be teaching on the new standards while being assessed on the old standards. And that is ultimately what I have for you this evening. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And I think just yeah, I think just some clarification on the funds. So we're essentially moving those funds up now with the intent to essentially put those funds back two years from now when that curriculum cycle would come up, just so that's clear to everybody.
Any other board discussion?
I have a question. Is there any qualifications to be the tax collector?
Nicole, I don't, can you answer that? I don't believe in the school code. Mr. Pratt is saying, no. It is a paid position, yes.
Yeah. So essentially you have to be a resident of that municipality for at least one year. You do have to get your tax collector certification.
And be bonded.
Correct, and be bonded. But really, there's not that many qualifications.
All right. If that's all, Shadine, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Helen Shell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hian?
Yes.
Mr. Rightenauer?
Yes.
Mr. Sheetz?
Yes.
Mr. Stewitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallizer?
Yeah.
Mr. Heffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ivankar?
Yes.
Eight years motion passes.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, may I have a motion to approve the items under the superintendent's report?
So move Sheets.
Sheets and Rightenauer?
Couple items on the superintendent report this